Good evening and welcome to the Borough of Clark Summit Council Meeting, May 6, 2020. And we have Mr. Kelly, is he?
Present.
Okay, thank you. We have Mr. Kusiany.
Present.
Mr. Shields.
Present.
Solicitor Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Here.
Mrs. Semerall.
Present.
And we have Jen Matilega, who is sitting in through our Borough Manager, Virginia.
No, I'm here too.
Oh, she's there.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Virginia, I didn't see how you're doing. Thank you.
No problem.
Absent this evening is Councilman Williams, Chief Yarns, and our Mayor Johnson. First item on our agenda is our public hearing ordinance. Everybody got all the information on it? And is there anyone that has any questions?
Jerry, can you put the microphone closer to your mouth? You're muffled.
Okay.
The ordinance 2002 of 2020 is the ordinance related to the creation of tobacco-free zones within borough parks.
Exactly.
Right. We waited another month since last month and we did not get any public comment on it.
Right. And everybody received the email on it. It was spelled out in detail, so if there's any questions on it, please feel free to address them. If not, we'd like someone to make a motion for it.
I do have one question, Madam President, for the Solicitor. Kevin, does this, does the language exclude, I know it involves vaping and smoking, and I know we talked, we reduced it to the locations, you tailored that, correct?
Correct.
Does it include smokeless tobacco?
Yes.
It does?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, it does. I saw that, yeah.
Now, it excludes, it does not include any product that has been approved by the FDA, FDA for the sale as a tobacco cessation product or for other therapeutic purposes.
But if somebody was to have an unlit cigar in their mouth chewing on it, it would prohibit them from doing that?
Yes, that's correct. We wouldn't qualify for the program if it didn't exclude all tobacco.
Does the program do anything but pay for the signs that it creates?
That's the primary thing that I'm aware of. And it provides us, I think, other updates and things of that nature. Virginia may be able to speak more to the program.
It's an educational program. For the benefit of the borough, we get the signs and their continuation on their education projects. But specifically for the borough, it's just the signs.
Ah, yes. Okay.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the ordinance? I'll make a motion.
Do we need to close the public hearing on this first?
What was that again, Dave?
Should we close the public hearing on this first before we get a motion to approve it?
We've already, we have had no response on it. It's been...
Right.
Well, that's, that's what I mean. As the time for public comment, I, what I, my question was, do we need to, need to end that period and then go into a motion?
No. Madam President, what I suggest we do is we, we now start our meeting, and then it'll be addressed as part of old business in the meeting.
Okay. Very.
Okay.
Fine.
And, Madam President, I just want to make sure, just for the record, so everyone understands, that today, tonight's meeting is complying with the Sunshine Act and Senate Bill 841, which was recently, which was, was just recently approved by the Governor's Office, in that we are allowing public comment by way of written submission. And the movie, or the meeting is being aired live on Channel 19, cable channel.
Kevin, is it live or is it delayed?
It is, it is, Virginia.
Okay, they did.
And it is also being aired on YouTube.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that very informative information. Of course, Kevin, thank you. Okay. We're gonna vote on this later than Kevin.
Yes, we'll vote on it during the meeting.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is our...
Madam President, are we still taking inquiry on this item, or should that be saved for the second on the question?
What's our Solicitor's advice on it?
We could, we could address questions on the, on this, if they're, on the question during the meeting.
Okay.
This is really, public hearings for purposes of the, you know, for, if there's public input on the, on the ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is our moment of meditation. At this point, our mayor usually leads us in the meditation, but tonight, I will be more than happy to address for the mayor and for our chief. Our mayor has lost his son, Greg Johnson, who was also a junior council member, and that's why our mayor is not with us this evening. And also, our Chief of Police has just buried his mother today, so if you would keep both those families in your prayers and, and also all the front runners, our nurses, police, EMA, everyone that's working on the front line for their families to be kept safe. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our Pledge Allegiance to the Flag. I see you have a flag too, Dave. I have one too, so...
Yes, I do, Jerry. Whichever.
Okay, thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
To the republic.
Public.
Which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is, do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, Matt.
Okay, thank you very much. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Favors have it 6-0. The next is the approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
I'll motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Madam President, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, it was seconded by Mr. Kusiany. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Favors have it 6-0. Our next item on our agenda is our public comment, and at this point, Solicitor, is this where we will address?
Madam President, I think at this point in time, if the Borough Manager can identify those individuals who submitted written comments, they had, they were, they were permitted to submit their written comments in connection with the Borough business and agenda items up until 12 noon today. Virginia, do you want to summarize those?
Correct. The first one came from Mr. Jeffrey Blau at 217 West Grove Street. His email is for consideration and discussion at the council meeting regarding Miles Foundry and the condition of Miles Foundry. He enclosed pictures of that, of the foundry and some broken windows and so forth, and he's asked that we look into this. I can tell you that Jen is working on it.
Okay. And everybody should have received their email with all this information on the foundry, the pictures and the whole bit. So Jen's gonna do an extensive report on it, I'm sure.
She's already worked with them before, so I believe we're, Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're gonna cite them at this point, right?
Yes. Yeah, they did get the windows fixed. That was one big issue last time. They did fix the windows, but they're broken again. And now I believe there's a piece of siding that came off, and it looks like there's more damage probably from the bad winds that we've had. So, going with that, but we end up at the magistrate if something doesn't get, you know, completely fixed, so.
One thing I'd like to press on that public comment is, and I'd like to address this to the Solicitor, is I believe that unless any additional information is provided from a verifiable source, the borough should not comment one way or the other about any contamination that may or may not be at that site.
That's right. I agree. We can't confirm that until it's, it's confirmed.
These two has to be just materially relevant to the ordinance itself, nothing else.
Yes.
Correct.
And I'm gonna go by...
Along those same lines, is this, is this, is this anything that maybe the Department of Labor and Industry should get into because of it possibly being a health, health issue for the citizens of the borough? Would Labor and Industry get in on this at all?
You mean environmental protection?
Yeah, well, yeah, maybe, maybe a DEP too. Yes, Kevin.
Yes. Actually, I think it would be DEP, yeah.
Well, maybe I could talk to Joe Zepolsky from BIU and get him in on it.
I, I, I know I've heard rumblings before about skunks and that being seen coming out of the building. So just by virtue of that, I think that would create a, a health issue for the neighbors, certainly.
Well, let me talk to Joe. Let me see what we could do.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate your good work on that, Jen. Okay, the next item.
Well, the next item under public comment came, is a letter from Warren Raker, who's a managing partner with the Village Square Plaza Associates. He has nine units that are not operating right now and a few that are only partially operating, and he's requesting some consideration for sewer billing as a result of that.
I, I think, I think I sent comments back. I don't know if everybody received the comments that I sent back, but, you know, I don't know if he would be so free-willing if the buildings were vacant and all of a sudden he had them filled and he was collecting the rent on them, that he would, he would rush right down and tell us that everything was okay. We've dealt with Mr. Raker before in the borough, and he seems to wanna get a lot of things done in his return. I'm not sure everything goes the opposite way when we need things, but I, I think we just file it, my opinion.
Okay. And, and the other side of the point is, we do, we're in a situation right now where our, we're getting breaks as far as our, with our taxes, we're not charging late penalties and so on. And, and in a situation where, I, I know the fact that we cannot do this for everybody that is...
Bless you.
He is...
Thank you. Well, thank you.
He, he has a big complex in our borough, and I had myself think maybe we should consider working. So...
Well, the only problem there, Jerry, is you're gonna open up a can of worms, and I'm, I'm sure everybody feels the same way. You know, if you do it for one, you're gonna have to do it for everybody.
Madam President, if, if I may make a comment on this, I think anyone, some of the fees go to Arwa directly, some go to Stormwater, and quite frankly, that, that entire property is impermeable for the most part. I think that anybody that wants to seek relief should seek relief from Arwa, and any relief Arwa wants to give them, we will ratify coming out of our monthly charge.
I, I think that's a good suggestion. I think that's a good direction, maybe, Virginia, for you to direct Mr. Raker on, and...
Anybody else?
Yeah, anybody, if, if Arwa says that they'll, they will forgive part of the monthly EDU that person owes, the, us as a borough can ratify it because then it won't cost us money.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right, I'll take care of that tomorrow.
Okay. And the next comment is from John Early.
No, from John Early, yes, and this is just an acknowledgement of Chief Yarns, who's not here to hear it, but it was just, he's thanking Chief Yarns for a quick and good response to a problem he was having as a Clark Street resident.
I think maybe a copy of that should go to the, to the Chief of Police and the mayor, and also with the thanks of the Borough Council for a job well done.
I, I agree, if...
And I'm sure that that's the procedure that has taken place. Thank you.
Okay.
And the next, the EMA report.
Right, the EMA just wanted to give an update on what's happening, and really, it's just a listing of, of the Lackawanna County reported cases and the number of deaths. And then on a side note, also Art Frank wanted you to, wanted Council to know that he and Jerry have been going to Garrity's on Senior Day and letting them know about the Yellow Sign Program, which is where the elderly can get this yellow sign that they would put in their window if they need help. And we're trying to educate the neighbors on it. It's a county program that's being run, and he jumped on the bandwagon with it, and he's been, he and Jerry have been working very hard on that.
And, and I have to say that the, the entire, we hand them out at Garrity's, and we have people outside the borough that are also very interested in it. We just, the most important thing, we wanted the people, everybody to know is there is help from Clark Street Borough. Anything they need, we're available to make sure that they get it, and it's been working very, very well. People really, really appreciate it, so we'll just keep doing it until, and if we're not there, that Garrity's has a table set up with the yellow and the green cards for the people, numbers. There's also paper there with all kinds of directions for any, any issues that they would need it for. So it's, oh, while Garrity's is open, all this information is there.
It's also important to note that residents, if you see, if you know an elderly neighbor and you see a yellow piece of construction paper in their, one of their front windows, they're, they're needing help of some nature, and it might be a good chance to check on them.
Exactly, and...
Very good. Thank you.
And our police force works, and they also kind of keep an eye out just in case they see a yellow sign in.
Jerry, is the fire company aware of this also, this program also?
That I do not know.
That, that might be something that maybe Virginia could filter that down to Jay, Jay Miller.
Okay.
And he could get back, because we haven't had a meeting with the fire company in, actually in the last two months because of the pandemic.
Okay.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be good, you could, Virginia, if you can, give it to Jay and just ask him to put it out over the website.
You got it.
That way, he can, he can disseminate it that way, and that, that way it'll get out even further.
Perfect.
You'll have, you'll have more people...
That's a wonderful program.
Yes.
It is. It certainly is, and it's, it's so well-received too. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay. The next item is our police report.
No, one more thing under public comment. Art Frank also, not as EMA Director, but personally asked us if we would consider putting benches in Carnation Park. He said they don't have to be new. If we have any used ones or can get somebody to donate used ones, he'd be happy to donate his time and materials in cleaning them up and painting them to put them down there. But he said that there's actually people using the park, basketball's being played, people do go there and walk around, and he thought that benches would be a really nice plus.
Yeah, that may be a good project for an Eagle Scout to do for the park, or Virginia, we might want to keep that in mind.
That's a great idea. I'll pass that along.
And if any...
Virginia, could I, could I interject something there? I'm sorry, Jerry.
Oh, that...
Terry?
Go ahead.
Yeah, now, how about if he maybe got that assistance from the Boy Scouts, or maybe some, somebody is looking for a, a project to be involved in some youth group?
Eagle Scouts.
Yeah.
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 Maybe they could help them out, you know?
Okay, I will promote that along.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. Did you have a comment, Vince? Excuse me.
I'm sorry, who's that?
Did you, I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt you, Vince, if you had a comment on...
No, Jerry, I didn't, I didn't have a comment. I, I think it's a great idea if we can find a revenue-neutral way to do it at the moment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, and then the, our last item will be our public comment on our ordinance that we're in the process of holding on this evening. Does anybody have any questions, any comments?
I do have one question about it. Every park that is getting these new signs already has a sign. Is that correct?
I know we have one up here at the Lewis Lane Park.
We didn't have the Pocket Park at the time, and we didn't, I don't think there's one at Veterans Park. I'm also not certain about the condition of the other signs.
So I, I'm just trying to understand what the risk is to public health by not allowing smokeless tobacco products to be consumed by adults on public property. That's where I'm starting to have a problem with it. The vaping, I can understand that, and obviously smoking. But did they articulate any kind of second-party? I, as far as I know, that non-smoking tobacco consumption doesn't have any impact on other individuals within proximity to the one consuming it.
It's just the litter that's associated with it, you know?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't really, Kevin, I understand that for smoking, but I, I don't think there's any manifest litter with chewing tobacco or chewing a cigar. I think what we have is a group of tobacco prohibitionists advancing an agenda that comes at the expense of adults being able to do essential adult activity without harm to other people in exchange for a couple free signs. So that, that's my concern about that. I'm all, I'm all for nobody getting hurt on public property, so by all means, the vaping being incorporated into the non-smoking is completely within the realm of reason, but that's all I wanted to say about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vince.
I just think, Vince, just one more, I think it's not only, from what I read on the program, it's not only the public health, but it's also having kids exposed to it, and that hoping, hopefully, they wouldn't be offered.
The problem, Kevin, is that if, if, well, if they're offered it, that's a separate crime, and if I want to stand right next to the park on a public road or on private property, they can still be exposed to it. You know, and unlike schools, which are made for children, the parks are made for all, all, all residents of the community to enjoy. I, I know that you just, I know I'm not saying that to you personally. You're articulating the policies put forth by the company, so I respect and understand that. I just find it to be a government overreach in a, in a time of significant government overreach.
Okay. Well, thank you, and we appreciate your opinion on that too, Vince. Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Is that where we're gonna bring that up under old business?
No, we're bringing it up on public comment.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. I'll second.
And second by Kathleen. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Our vote is five to one. Thank you. Next item...
The record, Madam President, Councilman Kusiany voted no.
I did. That is on the record. Thank you very much, Vince. Okay. Next item is our police report. Everybody got the email with all the information on our police report. Does anybody have any comments or that they would like to express as far as our police report goes?
There is one thing I was asked to point out. There is no meter collection money reported under the Financial Collections page. We, they did collect, and it was brought to the bank. It was posted incorrectly. The bank is still remedying that. It's about $1,100 for the month of April, so it will be showing up in next month's report, but it, it did happen.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the police report?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Harry Kelly, I'll second it, yeah.
Okay, so it's Kusiany and...
It was Bob Shields.
Oh, excuse me. Okay. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Favors have it 6-0. No bids and quotes, Virginia? Nope. Do we have a motion to approve the Girls' Treasure Report? Everybody got their email with our treasure report on it?
Yes.
And...
Need a motion.
We need the motion on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasures report.
I'll second that.
Who was that?
Mr. Jenkins.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Favors have it 6-0. The next item on our agenda is the vendor payments to be ratified. Do we have a motion to pay our bills?
So moved.
Mr. Jenkins, do we have a second?
Second.
Kathleen, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Favors have it 6-0. Under old business...
That was our ordinance. We just approved that.
We took care of that, so... Under our new business, we have the employees seeking a future address act, Virginia.
Yeah, just for the record, and I know I've sent out an email to everybody, just for the record, DPW has given, has split their shifts, so we've only had three working at any given time. They voluntarily used their accrued sick leave to continue that. They will be going back to full staff on Monday. The concern though, and the same thing Jen and I also split shifts for a while until we worked out a system in the office, and we voluntarily used our accrued sick time as well. The concern is, should something happen to somebody later this year and they need that sick time? For example, Jen used all of her sick time. She's got nothing left, and we know chances are good that she'll get sick again, you know, before the end of the year. We don't want that to happen, but it could.
Jen, yourself healthy.
I would, you guys, you know, I think that we need to discuss what, you know, what allowance you want to give for them. Also, the guys, the DPW work hard on accruing those sick leaves for, for emergencies, and that's why they used it. But God forbid one of them break a leg or something at this point later this year. They're not gonna have that time. If they can go on workers' comp, but that's only two-thirds pay. So they're just asking, you know, so basically, everyone's asking for Council to give some consideration on that. I don't expect an answer tonight, but maybe you could... I don't expect an answer tonight, but maybe you could think about it.
And, and just, as we, before we go any further on this issue, I just want to put out there, this is an item that would clear, would squarely fall within executive session because it's a personnel matter, if we, if we're going to dig deep into this issue.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Just something to, to think about and to consider. We, we thank our DPW for all they've done for us and also our office staff, how they've worked through. I know, Virginia, if you have any information through FEMA or anything, would they be able to help the borough out in any way? I know that.
They have nothing for, something along this. There's, there's nothing that's available right now that we would benefit from. The closest possible opportunity is that payroll program, that continuous payroll program that's being offered, but it's actually not available to local governments. It's only for small businesses, so there.
Does that affect us or no?
No, that's the problem. I checked into it because I thought we could apply for it and that would help recoup some of the costs, but no, they, we're not eligible for it unless something changes in the future, so maybe speak to, to Congressman or Representative Cartwright.
Okay.
So, on, on this topic, if anyone has any ideas or suggestions, I'd ask you, you can even email them to me, that way they, they're privileged and I will share them with Virginia.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next item is our timing of our paving.
Okay, let me explain what's going on. The paving bid, we had planned on advertising it this month and awarding the bid at the June meeting. We need to get the ad running, I'd need to place it tomorrow. Problem is, they, they just opened up to construction, so the contractors are already playing catch-up on the projects that they had bid earlier this year. I am not sure, well, I just wanted council to have the opportunity to give any input whether they wanted to make any alterations to the schedule or not, because it may affect the number of bids, it could affect the pricing of the bids, it may affect the response time in getting the bid done. The alternative is to wait till next year on all the paving. Just throwing it out there, I'm more than willing to continue on, just didn't want to do so without you guys having had that chance to think about it.
And paving has to be completed before it gets cold, right?
Correct.
So, what, what do we have it at now, like September, October, or November?
September 30th.
Yeah, September 30th, and theoretically, with the bid is early enough that there'd be no problem, except the contractors are lost six weeks, so they're six weeks behind on their projects. I don't know whether that'll affect us or not. We can run the bid, see what we get, and then table it if the bid's too high or there's problems.
I would certainly, I would certainly be willing to extend it to October 31st, because I think the weather would still be conducive, although we have had snow in October.
Yeah.
Well, I'd be more than willing to hold that under our, you know, under our belt in case we need to pull it out, as opposed to actually advertising it.
Yeah, I think we need to proceed with the paving. We, we, we can always cut the amount down like we have in previous years if the financial element comes into play because it's on a footage ratio, but we, we have to get back to business as normal. It's been paved.
Certainly, if the bids are unreasonable or there's problems, we have next month to talk about it. So, okay, I'll run the ad tomorrow and we'll see what happens.
Just food, food for thought, guys, this is Harry speaking. I just thought of something, that's a petroleum-based product, the, you know, the blacktop and such, and with the price of oil dropping like to negative numbers, maybe, maybe we should keep proceeding through.
Yeah, you're right. I, they just opened up the, the plant, so I don't know what the pricing is yet, but you might be right.
I mean, I mean, a couple, we saw it was negative $45 a barrel of oil.
Yeah, but Harry, you know, as soon as everything starts to roll again, the price of, the price of fuel is going to go up again.
Well, oh, I agree, I agree Dave, but I'm just saying maybe we should do it now anyway, like, like Virginia was saying.
Well, it certainly won't hurt.
I mean, you may get it cheap, you might get it cheap.
I, I agree with you, Harry.
Yeah.
We have nothing to lose.
Let's see, yep, mine, food for thought.
I, I proceed forward with that, Virginia, and.
Will do. Well, place the ad tomorrow.
Time to play, yeah, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, the resolution 200, 2020-08, that's our, we received, everybody also received the email of our Councilman Patrick Williams resigning from council, and we certainly regretfully see Pat resigning. Pat has been on council for 20 years, he's been a tremendous asset to the borough and has always gone above and beyond in a lot of the committees he was on, was always very, very helpful, so we, with deep, deep regret, have to accept his resignation and just wish him continue, that his health does continue to get better, so do we have a motion to accept Pat Williams' resignation?
I'll make a motion, we accept his resignation effective May 1st.
No, it's.
Effective tonight.
It's, it's effective tonight.
Okay, I changed that, effective tonight.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, on the question?
Madam President, on the question, it's, this is a resolution that I had circulated, and the important, the significance of this is that the resignation is not effective until there is, there is, the council approves it, so we need to approve it, and this starts a 30-day clock. The council has to appoint a replacement to fill that vacancy.
Okay, thank you very much, Kevin.
I do have a quick question, Madam President. Kevin, is that why it's tomorrow instead of today? Like, because we, if it's a, is our next meeting within 30 days? That's what I'm asking.
The effective date is today, of May 6th is today.
And our next meeting's June?
June 3rd.
Okay. Got it, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I would ask the council maybe consider some sort of recognition for Councilman Williams' public service to the community. He's done a lot of things, so.
I, I absolutely agree with that totally. I, I think that we definitely will get together, I'll get together with you if you want, and we'll come up with a definite program for, and, and his family to include all of them, so we'll.
This is all over.
But thank you very much. He does certainly deserve the recognition, bring all that time into our borough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Favors have it six zero. The next item on our agenda is. Excuse me, I lost my agenda.
So, Madam President, the, the next item on the agenda is the, is the timing for the interviews, so I just want to make sure everybody's on the same pages as, as to the process for replacing a vacancy on council.
Oh, okay, thank you so much. I did find it, I put it under my other paper here, but.
So, now that the council has accepted the resignation of Patrick Williams, council has 30 days to fill that vacancy. The vacancy has to be filled by an elector of the borough, in other words, somebody who's registered to vote in the borough and who has resided in the borough for at least the past year continuously.
Correct.
The, the council has to make a determination as to how they will accept resumes and applications and conduct interviews. Obviously, we've been through this recently with the resignation of Dominic Scott, so we have some precedent we could follow.
Okay.
It's up to, it's up to council how to proceed. We have to fill the vacant, we don't, we have to fill the vacancy by June 5th. If we don't, we run into a number, a number of issues that could ultimately result in Court, the Court of Common Pleas appointing someone for us.
Kevin, do you have any suggestions? I mean, should we do like a work session or, and I imagine we'd have to open it up to the public, too?
No, my recommendation is you advertise that you're accepting resumes and you set, set a deadline, and then based on the number of applications that you receive, we can either have a special meeting on our, we can use our Wednesday work session in, in May. If there's not a ton of, of resumes, then we can conduct interviews maybe at 6 o'clock on June the, June 3rd, or however much time we wanted to designate for it.
Kevin, what if we're still doing what we're doing? Are we going to do the interviews then?
Well, we, we just went through this with this, with Scranton, so we, the way I, we did it for Scranton is we had interviews, we gave them the number, and then I could control as each one of them comes in. The only, the only disadvantage is that it has to be done, the interviews, the entire process, in my opinion, has to be in, has to be done in public. All deliberation with regard to the selection has to be done in public because you're appointing an elected official. So, the only disadvantage, I mean, not that it's a disadvantage, but the, the third or fourth candidate is going to be able to hear what the first, the questions that were asked of the first and second candidates. But I, in my opinion, it has to all be done in the public. This would be aired on YouTube or however else we can do it.
Okay.
So that the public can have access to the process.
I think it makes, I think it makes sense that the night of, because if it all has to be public, one, you already have an audience tuning in, if they are going to tune in, and two, it ensures that there isn't private deliberation after the candidate interviews before there's public deliberation.
All right, and that's a good point to raise, Vince, is that there cannot be any, no, there can't be a private deliberation amongst members of council, as you guys know, about the selection. It all has to be done in public.
Kevin, as we've done in the past before, we've, I think, pretty much had Jerry lead on with the questions, so it would probably be best that we just continue that, and if anybody has any questions that we would like to ask the people, we forward them to Jerry or forward them to you, to forward to Jerry, and then have Jerry ask the questions.
Yeah.
And then go from there.
I think that's a good point, Councilman, I think it's imperative that everybody, everybody be asked the same questions, so that there's.
Exactly, yeah.
So we can really gauge their responses, and that's, we, what we could do is circulate questions amongst us to determine where the five best questions to ask and make sure that every candidate is asked the same question.
Solicitor, hey, Madam President, I think in order to save a lot of time, we should request, we should close it, maybe three days before or so, and ask anybody, or two days, or at least one day is my point, and ask anybody who wants to submit their name that they have, they have to submit a resume, because we don't want to go, that is where they should get the, and that's obviously a public document with maybe their phone number retracted if somebody asks for it, but that, that information should be known to council before the interview so that that time isn't taking up on the interview going over that.
Right, and that should be available to the public beforehand as well.
Sure.
And we will, yeah, we should, in Virginia, anything you receive with personal email addresses or cell phone numbers or addresses should be redacted.
Okay.
Kevin, when you, when you say open it up to the public, so all the applicants will be able to, to view each other when they're asked questions, are we going to, like, open it up to the, everyone in the, in the community, or build this past questions up and stuff like that and?
We could, we could.
Public comment like we're doing now?
Yeah, we could do that if you want to have, if you, if you want to invite members of the public to submit questions that, that the council, but I, I'll tell you, for, for the SCRAM process, we had, the, the council and Solicitor, we developed our own questions. Everybody had the ability to watch the process, but only the, they were not able to ask questions. And part of my concern with that is, again, giving public, you know, giving free rein to the Zoom process and the hacking that's taken place, unfortunately.
Right. Okay, well.
So, what deadline do we want to put out there for submitting their resumes?
I, I would definitely think at least Friday before our meeting.
No later than Monday.
Why don't we make it Friday at 3:00? I'll copy everything to everybody, that'll give you guys the weekend to review it and make sure, make sure you're comfortable with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good, okay.
Thank you, Virginia.
And I could begin to, I could begin the process of, so I'll work with Virginia in advertising the, the acceptance of resumes and the scheduling of the interviews, and we will begin circulating proposed questions for council's comments.
Okay, that, that sounds fine then, thank you. Okay, that, our next item on our agenda is our paying off our tan.
Well, yeah, we financially have the capital right now to pay off the tan and stop accruing interest, so I just wanted to know if council had any feelings about that. We took in, well, currently there's $583,000 sitting in the real estate account.
What are we, all the tan?
The tan was $300,000. We could also pay it off in part and wait another month or two and see what happens if you want.
Virginia, what's the interest rate?
I don't recall off the top, I had 2%, 1.9%?
I can find out.
I know it was a low, it's probably in the ballpark, I would think.
Yeah.
Do you have any major expenses coming up in the near future, or?
That's a good point, Dave.
No, no, I, that's just it, I think that we, I think the money's available, we expect more income coming in, we don't have anything major, the biggest purchases that are coming up are going to be delayed, so they're, you know, God forbid, you know, God forbid an emergency, we're good. I think we can afford to do it, and I would actually suggest at least paying off $200,000, if not all of it.
If that's your recommendation, Virginia, I, and, and holding back on the $100,000 because we don't know right now what monies we do have coming in, so if you want to move in that direction, I think that would.
It's 2.24%.
Thank you.
Okay, well, do we, do we have a motion for Virginia to pay the $200,000 on the tan and then a whole back of $100,000 just in case we have any financial, anything could break loose at this point, we're really struggling, so.
I have a quick question, Madam President.
Sure.
Is tan paid back at the due date, Virginia, or is there a monthly payment due on it?
No, it's paid, it's due by December 31st. It just accrues interest until then.
And it accrues, go ahead, I'm sorry, Kevin.
And if it, if we default, it would be a 12% rate.
So, the interest accrual can be mitigated by early payment? That's what I'm, I'm understanding, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I ensured there was no prepayment penalty on this.
Right. Okay, do we have a motion to move forward with the tan, with the $200,000?
Madam President, it's Harry, could I interject something?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay, and I'm sorry, you know, forgive me, our financial year, does that begin in July?
No.
I know.
January 1st.
A lot of governments do, oh, January, okay, because I thought, I know some start in July, and, and I guess what I was going to suggest, July, we wait and see what kind of financial shape we're in at that point, but.
No, we have until December to pay this, we're good.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that was a good question, no, thank you, Harry.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Shields, and on the question?
It was Dave, right, first?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed? Favors have it 6-0.
And I guess in the next, in the next couple of months, we can revisit it and pay that $100,000 if, if we're.
Right.
Oh, exactly, exactly. You know what? It's gonna give us a better picture financially how we're sitting. That, that's what we want to make sure that, i, if we need it, it would be there. And is that how you feel about this too, Virginia, that?
Yeah.
It's a good cushion to have?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, but the purpose of it was to hold us until the real estate money came in and it has come in. And fortunately, we're not, we're, we've lost, you know, we're not getting as much as we normally do, but we are getting in a good payment. We're not losing it. It hasn't dramatically slipped and the vast majority of the money, money has come in already.
And, and the fact that, uh, any taxes that were paid by the end of April, that they got, uh, a reduced rate. But now, uh, we're gonna have to give them the reduced rate anyway, right?
No, no, we're gonna talk about a letter from the county, but it's waiving a late fee after June 30th.
Right, right, yeah.
So we, we don't have to do that. That's a suggestion from them. And it's only delaying the, the late fee. It's just waiving the late fee.
Right.
So we'll get to that, um, under correspondence.
Okay, thank you. So we did, all in favor?
We did.
We did that, right?
Probably did that, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, our solicitor's report?
Um, last week, or last, last month, um, one of the issues that was raised was the, the purchase of a, uh, there was a repository offer on property along, uh, Winola Road. I have sent a, a release agreement to that prospective purchaser indicating that in exchange for us accepting the offer, that she would release us from any future claims related to water, uh, the infiltration or the, um, the presence of water on that property.
Right.
Um, I've done, uh, we have, I did some easements for, uh, different, um, water, uh, sewer, storm sewer projects we need to do. And, um, I think those are the major issues, right, Virginia?
Yep.
You working on?
Yep, I think we're pretty good. Things have been quiet recently.
You, um, I sent an, I circulated an update with regard to the Sheridan Avenue Field. Now, last, 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 uh, council meeting, um, you passed a, a motion extending the closing through June. So that was, uh, wise on your part, Councilman Cruchiani, because of all the stuff that has come up. But you, as you can see from my update, we have, um, made, there's movement. It's been po, it was posted in the jurist that, uh, individuals who would make a claim to those properties, uh, would have to come forward later this month. So I spoke with the, the, uh, attorney for the purchaser and it looks like we'd be on track to close by late May. Certainly before the, uh, our, our council meeting.
Very good. That's, that's exciting news.
Yeah.
Derek, Jerry, if I may, I have a couple, couple of questions that I, I'd like to try to get answered if it's possible.
Sure.
Uh, there's a, a request coming from the, uh, uh, the board of directors at the gathering place. They would like to reinstitute the food pantry setup that was in the vestibule, uh, at the bottom there, uh, in our building, uh, at the elevator. Does anybody have any issue or any problem with that? It will be maintained, uh, through the gathering place. Uh, if nobody has an issue with that, I'll, I'll get back to Dory and let her know.
I think that's a great idea.
Especially now.
Yes.
Especially now. Uh, the other, the other thing, thank you very much, by the way. And, uh, the other thing, Virginia, are there any reinvestment grants out there to stimulate business in the town such as, uh, maybe, uh, helping Mr. Raker out to, uh, fill his building? Are there any, uh, reinvestment grants throughout the state?
I'm not aware of anything special coming up because of this yet, but let me look into that and I'll pass word along if I find some.
Okay, all right. The, it's, the, uh, the next thing I have, but whatever happened to those streetlight covers that we talked about when we, uh, changed over to the LEDs? We had, uh, uh, talked about it and, uh, one meeting you mentioned that, uh, you were gonna check with PP and all because they had agreed that they would, uh, uh, put light covers over some of the, uh, some of the streetlights?
As far as I know, the ones that were an issue were resolved. Vince, you're one of those. Is it taken care of?
Okay, well, I, I had a, I had a couple in mind, but I, I didn't know that, uh,
I don't know. I've heard nothing since then. I knew that they were supposed to have taken, taken care of it. So I'm assuming it is.
Okay. I, is there still room to get any more, uh, taken care of or is that just a matter of an inquiry?
I'd be more hap, more than happy to ask.
Okay, all right.
I think that that's a simple request. It might take a little bit of time.
Yeah, well, that's all right.
Simple request for them. Yeah, let me know who and where and I'll reach out to PP now.
Okay, all right. The, another thing, uh, Jerry, I had mentioned it before about smoking in our vehicles. Uh, I think now that we have the ordinance for the, for the parks, it might be a, a good time to, uh, reevaluate, uh, smoking in our vehicles for the employees, especially with the secondhand smoke that, uh, our employees who do not smoke, that, uh, they, they are subjected to. Uh, since there are vehicles and, uh, we pay the, uh, the majority of the health insurance, I think it might be something to, to look into that we prohibit, uh, cigarette smoking in our vehicles. Because, uh, you know, I don't, I don't feel that we owe it to our employees who don't smoke, that they need to, uh, be punished by, uh, having to tolerate someone else's, uh, stinky habit.
Okay, well, it's certainly something we can take into consideration again, Dave.
Can we have that solicitor possibly look into doing something like that? Make a, uh, uh, resolution or whatever, since there only are vehicles. I think it'd just be a matter of something that needs to be approved.
I believe we were told last time that because, uh, the DPW and the police are unionized, that it would have to be negotiated. But Kevin, if you want to look into that and let us know.
Okay, that's fair enough. That's fair enough. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Jerry.
Okay, you're welcome, David. Any other council member have anything they would like to express to the public? I know Kathleen, you had mentioned about, uh, compliment, uh, complimentary to Garrity's for all they've done during this. Uh, oh, evident, oh, there's Kevin up there, uh, during this pandemic. And, and a lot of our other businesses in town who have participated. So feel free to give, uh, your compliments to whatever group you want because they, everyone's been so good, but.
Oh. I lost, I lost everyone for a minute. I didn't hear you, Jerry. Are you discussing people in town doing?
Yeah, that's exactly, yeah, go right ahead, though. You're fine.
That, I was gonna mention, um, who comes to mind is Garrity's for me, the owner of Garrity's that they're just working above and beyond right now. That maybe we can do something special for them.
Okay. And, and I'm certain that we will, once, once everything is totally resolved. I know, uh, tomorrow, uh, Dawn from the Sunrise Cafe, she's gonna be providing lunches for anybody that stops by. So she has also, uh, been pitching in every week with her services. And, and so any other council members that have any, uh, one in particular that they want us to, make outstanding for what they've done to help the borough, we absolutely will do that, so.
You know, it had been.
Jerry, I think along those, along those lines, excuse me, Virginia, I, I think along those lines, uh, all the eateries in the borough of Clark Summit, I think they've, uh, they've, they've all done their part. They've all kind of stepped up, even as far as Mannings, uh, with the ice cream. Well, like they've, uh, they've done, they've done exemplary work, you know, so I think they're all to be congratulated.
Oh, absolutely.
If, if we do something like that, maybe just get a blanket certificate and we can hand certificates out to, uh, the different places in the borough as our form of thank you and recognition, you know?
I, I do have to say it, and just, yeah, keeping tabs on, uh, the, for our, uh, the virus has not taken over our borough at all as far as everybody's staying home, wearing masks, doing all the things we're supposed to do. And as long as we continue to do that, we'll, we'll survive this. We're all together in it.
And, Madam President, um, this is, uh, Councilman Cruchiani. I think one thing we need to start to evaluate, um, as we look forward is are there ordinances that we have where parts of those ordinances might impede residents' ability, um, to be a little more sufficient in providing their own food? Uh, something that would come to mind is, um, the fence ordinance in the front yard. If we don't exempt out, uh, somebody that wants to say put a box garden in their front yard and have a very thin wiring fencing around it to keep rabbits out, uh, that technically wouldn't fall under the new ordinance. Evaluating the idea of, uh, of, uh, chickens without roosters in certain circumstances, if the setting is correct. We're lucky that the, the, uh, grocery stores are still full, but if you read any of the reports coming out this week, uh, meat production, uh, processing shortages in the United States going forward. Uh, we will have economic times after, that are difficult after the virus. So I think we don't want the government getting in the way, obviously we want safety, uh, we want cleanliness. But we don't want the government getting in the way of people being able to grow their own food on their property. So I think that's something everybody in council should think about and maybe we can discuss in the coming months.
Well, absolutely, absolutely. There are a lot of things that we're gonna really want to pull together and, uh, and help any one of our residents, any, any help that they need. Uh, there's someone in our borough office every day, so.
Well, and Madam President, we just, more, and more than anything else, we don't want to get in the way of them helping themselves.
Right.
That's exactly right. So, okay, well, thank, thank you all for your good comments. Thank you for a good meeting.
We're not done yet. Oh, we still have, uh, correspondence.
Oh, I forgot that. Okay, sorry about that, Virginia. We have a letter from, uh, the commissioners in reference to our, uh, property tax late fees. Uh, everybody was sent this on their email and they had the opportunity to look it over and there's no vote needed on that at all.
Well, no, they're, they're suggesting that we, we pass a resolution. They, they are waiving it for county. They're asking us to continue waiving it for, so the question is, do we want to copy this resolution and have it on our agenda for June?
What's the solicitor's recommendation?
Um, you know, to be honest with you, Dave, I, 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 I'll have to review it, but it, it seems to me, it seems to me that that is, it'd be good practice considering that the, the financial hardship that people are feeling is real. And this is one less thing for them to have to worry about, but it seems to me like this is, is, um, would be appropriate. So I could take, I'll take a stab at it for next, um, the next meeting.
Sir, am I, am I correct in understanding that it's essentially will be waived as long as it's paid by December 31st?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then, and the efforts of expediency then on the advice of our solicitor, uh, per his, uh, further review, I would make a motion that pending his further review and approval, that we approve this, uh, as a, uh, a waiver until, uh, 12/31/2020.
Well, it would be an agenda item for June's, uh, meeting because we'd have to vote on the resolution.
Right.
Okay, well, I, I figured I'd make a motion now that pending his approval, we would approve it. If he approves it, then it would be approved. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
But if, if you want to hold it through until the June meeting, that's totally up to, up to the council. I'll, I'll withdraw.
We could authorize Kevin to, to draft up a copy of the resolution.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is our executive sessions. Uh, we had none prior, none during, no, none subsequent. So I want to thank all you council members and our solicitor and our borough manager and Jen who wears more hats in the borough than anyone I know.
No hats on today, just ponytail.
So, uh, thank you all. Stay healthy and.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do we have a second? Thank you.
Sorry, I missed that second, huh?
Who seconded it?
I'll second, I'll come in.
You don't need, you don't need to vote on a motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Always screw that up.
Okay.
All right, we're all good.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Kevin.